Can you do it while we're in office?
Okay.
All right. Benton County County Commission is now in session. Roll down the board chair.
Mr. Charlie Cooper, Assistant to the Mayor, will lead us in prayers tonight.
Let us pray. Father God, we just come to you tonight humbly, Lord. We just ask your blessings upon this assembly, Lord. Let everything that's said or done here tonight be according to your will, Father God, and be for the best of the citizens of Benton County, Father God. You decide that you lead, God, and direct every decision that's made here, Father. Be with each and every family that's represented here in those who could be your father at height, just bless them. Look down the bottom, give them strength and give them comfort and give them safety, Father God. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Amen. Commissioner Burke, will you make the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which he stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Hee Thomas. The Wayne Fowler's. Danny Paul. We have thirteen members present, fourteen members present, three accents.
Okay, we do have a forum. Next on the agenda is the appointment of the new Sixth District Commissioner. Anyone that's here that's interested in this position, please rise. Okay. Yeah, we have five people interested. So instead of all of you coming up here, since there are so many of you, I'll just let you come one at a time. We can start over here and just work your way around and come up and introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is Linda Sanati. I'm from Big Sandy. Was born actually in Henry County, but I've lived in Big Sandy, went to Big Sandy School. I've been a member of this community for a long, long time. I was gone for a few years. I just completed, a year and a half ago, serving a decayed Secretary of Treasure of the Industrial Board of Benton County. I've worked at Camden General Hospital for many years, and I've been on the school board. I share that with you, not to present a portfolio, but merely to let you know that I have been integrated into the community and have invested a lot of my life in the betterment. And I present myself to perhaps do that again in another, in another way. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Linda. Okay, next, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the commission, your honor. I'd like to start by thanking all of you for your service to the community and for giving me this opportunity. My name is Delia Tibido. I reside at ninety-five Main Street in Big Sandy, and I've lived here for approximately four years. My profession was that of an architectural design drafter, now retired. And I've been a hospice volunteer for twelve years, publisher of The Voice, a conservative Christian newsletter since two thousand and six. I have been a mentor and conducted jail ministry to female inmates for seven years in Georgia and have performed a great deal of service within the church. My current activities include building restoration here and mentoring women at the Hope Center in Paris. Why do I stand before you today? I care deeply about serving the public and take my civic duty seriously. My entire life illustrates this. In fact, I had applied to get on the ballot for this position and due to the incompetence at the elections office, not once, ladies and gentlemen, but twice, was given the wrong paperwork and information and therefore was unable to get on the ballot. If appointed, I look forward to helping improve Benton County, Camden, and Big Sandy for everyone, starting with our children. Would anybody have any questions? Think I have a minute or two remaining. If not, I thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ray McMillan. I live in Big Sandy. I've been in Big Sandy for about seven years now. Let's see, two-time capture survivor, once since I've been here. I do a lot of community service. I help a lot of people get things done. I try to be helpful and use my time wisely. I just feel I can be beneficial to this community here, and if you give me a chance, I can prove myself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Jeff Murphy, and I live at three oh five Happy Hall Drive in Big Sandy, along with my wife, who's here with me tonight. Tonight, I'm seeking the opportunity to represent the people of the Sixth District by offering myself as a candidate to serve the unexpired term of Commissioner King. Over the last year and a half, maybe two years, I've had the privilege of attending most, if not all, of the monthly meetings of the commission and a good number of the committees. And so I feel like I have a good understanding about how the commission goes about its business and about the several issues and challenges that face our county. Tonight, I'm asking you for the opportunity to serve alongside of you, to help find ways to solve some of the problems that we face at the county. If I'm selected to serve, I will be open and accessible to all the people of the Sixth District, and I'll work to be an effective voice and represent them. If I'm selected to serve alongside of you, I promise to treat each of you with dignity and respect and try to see both sides of all the issues before coming to a final decision. I thank you for your consideration, and I humbly ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Bobby Burcham. I've lived in Big Sandy for twelve years now, me, my wife, and my two kids. And I actually ran for commissioners by the Sixth District. And the reason why I choose to do that is it's for my kids' future, for our community's future. And I really would hope that you guys give me the chance to serve with you, serve beside you, and I just thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else here? Okay. Since there are none, we're going to have a roll call vote. When your name is called out, please say the name, the last name of the person that you are voting for.
Stephen Stokes.
Murphy.
Marty Douglas.
Murphy.
Deborah Vane. Burcham. Kenneth Miller.
Burcham.
Roger Preston.
Hammer. I mean, Burchams.
Greg Bird.
Murphy.
Frank Ashland.
Murphy.
Jay Carr.
Murphy.
Dale Mountain.
Murphy.
Jeanne Caniston.
Murphy.
Mike Manrey.
Murphy.
Roseanne Ward.
Murphy.
Darryl Hees.
Murphy.
Jerry Cross.
Murphy.
He goin' wish to change your vote? Eleven for Murphy and three for Burcham. Murphy, I see.
Okay, Mr. Murphy, you'll come forward. We're going to take just a five-minute, just a real quick recess to have time to swear you in, okay? You'll come forward. Just come right up there. We will make sure. Thank you. You can hide your seat there, Mr. Murphy. Are you okay? Are you ready? Okay. Okay, we're going to move on now. The next on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. I need a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed. Number two is our citizens' forum. If you're here and you didn't sign the citizens' forum and you want to speak, right now is the time for you to come forward, please. Okay. Next is the commissioners' forum. Do we have a commissioner who would like to speak this time? Okay. Commissioner Preston, you're recognized.
Chairman. Commission. I was part of a conversation, and I was also part of listening to a conversation. And the conversation was about local option sales tax. The conversation was about declining numbers, sales are down, higher interest rates, which months were better than other months, which months were the worst months. So now, I'm going to provide everybody with the facts. All the information I provide you with comes from the trustee's office of one of two documents. For the past nine years, the local option sales tax going to the county, worst month is April. Five of the ninety years, it was April. But the city, March is the worst month, six of the last nine years. We should be celebrating. The highest ever was a tax, the local option sales tax in Benton County, was June of this year, two hundred eighteen thousand dollars. Only four times in the history of Benton County, four different months, has we exceeded two hundred thousand dollars for a payment. Three of those was in two thousand and twenty-three. The first one was November in two thousand and twenty-two. The city of Camden, for the first time, they received a monthly payment of over four hundred thousand dollars. That was in February this year. I remind everybody, it's your local option sales tax that's collected to the state and distributed back to the county. By law, we're required, fifty percent of that goes to the school. Fifty percent that we don't give to the school is divided between local options, excuse me, general fund and debt service. Of the local option dollars the school received in the two thousand and twenty-three year, this is actual dollar amounts. They've already received three million, four hundred fifty-four thousand, two hundred sixty-seven dollars. Budget, their estimate was two million, five hundred eighty-six thousand dollars. Budget missed their estimate by a little over eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. But they've done a lot better in twenty-four. Let's give them credit. They increased local option sales tax an additional six hundred thousand dollars, getting pretty close to the actual numbers. And I recommend, I suggest to budget to revisit this subject again with the school next year. If you leave the numbers the same and you don't move it, then local loss, local option sales tax of the school is going to exceed your estimate, four hundred forty thousand dollars. Two thousand and fourteen, Benton County's local option sales tax was only six hundred forty-six thousand, seven hundred and three dollars. Six hundred forty-six thousand dollars. Two thousand and fifteen, the first month, Benton County had to exceed a hundred thousand dollar payment. Two thousand and nineteen, we exceed one million dollars. Two thousand and twenty-two, three years later, we exceed two million dollars. I'm not talking about what's going to the city, I'm just talking about Benton County. Two thousand and twenty-three, total actual dollars given to Benton County, two million, two hundred seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars. The last ten-year average increase, county dollars, is a hundred sixty-three thousand dollars. What I'm trying to say, it is average increase in year after year after year, a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. The last two years has been a little better than that. Chairman, I'm going to stop. Give the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Preston. Number four on our agenda is our invited guests or speakers. We have two different people here tonight. First of all, I'll introduce two gentlemen from the Twenty-Fourth District Recovery Court, Mr. Josh Atkinson and Chris Smith. Please come forth, please.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Josh Agus. I'm the director of Recovery Court Part One, which is the northern part, the southern part of the district, and this is Chris Smith. He's the director up here in the northern part. Judge Bradbury apologizes, he played on the team as well, but he got hung up in court in Savannah. He texted me about ten minutes before he walked in. He's like, I'm still in Savannah. Like, yeah, you're not home, mate. What we're looking, asking for is a percentage of the open payment money from every county to fund the northern part of the district. We have had, the other four counties have already passed resolutions. We're coming up here tonight to ask y'all to pass a resolution, also to educate you on what a recovery court is and what it looks like and things like. Is it something new in this area? Some of y'all may know them as drug courts. That's what they were formerly known as. So that's what we're up here for tonight. So if you have any questions, start there, because that'd be a lot easier than me just rattling off a bunch of stuff y'all don't want to know about. Yes? So. Most of the time, it does not. Now, my position is funded through the state, all right? And the county that I work out of, it's reimbursed from the state, and that's what the goal is, to eventually do it here. But as of right now, that's not an option. So we're wanting to do it for the whole district because realistically, Benton Carroll and Henry made it just as bad as the Karen Harden. I don't see why we'd have a Twenty-Fourth Judicial District Recovery Court. They didn't include the entire district. I worked in treatment for years at the Jack G. Shelf, I was on the residential outpatient programs, and I can assure you, there's no county in this district that doesn't suffer, not only its people, but also the criminal justice system, the way on the taxes you collect. We're not going to be able to, to stop that, but what we're hoping to do is slow it down some and get some real community, recovery communities going in these areas. So eventually, we hope that this will be funded by the state as well.
Where does the, the fine, the penalty, the penalty put back?
So whenever anybody pays a fine for a drug, for anybody that's convicted of a drug charge, certain percentages of those fines go to different areas. And I can't, somebody made up the numbers, I don't know what I'm talking about. It's either twenty-five or fifty dollars for every fine comes to the recovery court. Now, since Benton County hasn't had a recovery court, I'll send it to. The other counties have just been cutting the checks to the state of Tennessee because there was no recovery court in this area. Now they're cutting the check to the Twenty-Fourth Judicial Recovery Court. All this will be ran out of Harden County. They agreed to handle the fundings for the entire district, as well as hiring Chris, even though he lives up north, as a county employee out of Harden County, which is really just semantics when we're talking about what we're doing. But that's where the money will all filter through, very county departments. The other counties that have cut checks from their open payment funds have cut the checks to Harden County, care of the Twenty-Fourth Judicial Recovery Court, and that's where those funds will be gotten.
So you said those funds will be going into that court. Yes. How will you measure the impact on Benton County?
I, I wish I could answer that right now. Yeah, I'd love to go up here and dazzy with numbers that aren't real, but the reality of it is, is, is I can't tell you who's going to make it, who's not. I can tell you that I've been in recovery for nine years. All right, I'm living proof that these things can work. The only thing I can tell you is that you'll have to sit back and see what we do. I wish I could sit here and say that I can take ten people and have ten of them in long-term recovery. I can't tell you that that's a lie. Anybody who tells you otherwise, lying.
I believe the, I believe the percentage, at least one does believe, is a forty-six percent. Is that so?
It's fifty-one percent completion, but that's really not my goal. My goal, my goal is long-term recovery for individuals who comes through that suffers from this disease and their families who suffer. Now, the state's got their idea of what to do, and I'm going to beat their standards, fifty-one percent, but that's not my standard. My standard is to put people in a position to have long-term recovery, to have a really good life that I was given.
This is a subject that I know very little about.
Yes.
And when you first ask any questions, I'm like, I didn't even ask a question. But can't you handle the conversation?
Yes.
We have a lot of people understand the problem that you're talking about.
Yes.
It had more potential, more talent, more she could handle, and you go to.
Yes.
It was the road he took. I got to trust you guys and thank you, because we got a lot of people who are a lot of us.
He was one of my good friends. And, and so we're learning. This is what we, I'm going to say.
Yes.
In case you would have been a hot girl, you could have been a white girl, you could have been a liar, you could have been a badger, whatever.
This gives us an opportunity to put things in place gradually, and that's what we want to do. And our, and that's what our recovery is. Recovery is a process, and just like this, the recovery court is going to be a gradual process to where we want to make impact and be influential in those individuals' lives, let those individuals be influential and impactful in the other individuals' lives in the community that are still suffering and struggling. And that's going to take time. That's going to take time. The good thing about this program is it's an eighteen-month, from eighteen to twenty-four month program. We're going to have people for eighteen to twenty-four months, a lot of case management. They'll remove a lot of the barriers that people run into when they come out of jail or prisons, that they come out with no employment, no stable house, they didn't have a house. But is it conducive to recovery? How you expect somebody to, to, to get a start on this when they're still living with people that are drinking or using drugs? You know, and eventually down the road, we would like to have some housing to go along with this, to help generate some revenue back into the courts. But those are all, I'm just trying to talk to you about today and what I know. I wish I could give you a number. I wish I could say that, but our goal is to, whoever enters this recovery court, to get the foundation they need to live a different life, and it'll, it'll take off from there.
And one more thing, they've allowed us, or Judge Bradbury, he's allowed us a little bit of freedom in this as well, too, within the parameters of what the state wants us to do, but also some freedom in what we want to do as well. Of course, both of us are in recovery, and we know what it takes. It's going to be a hard program. It is. But along with that, we will be having a peer mentorship program. So individuals with that lived experience, who have music success and are recovering, will also be their support. So that, those are individuals that are already in our community, being productive assets as well, are going to be their peer support, and so they will walk alongside them too as they continue improving their lives ultimately.
And some other other requirements is, if you don't have a GED or hospital plan, that's mandatory if you're in this program. There's, there's educational standards, there's housing, there's employment standards. Not everybody will go to residential treatment. It's not a cookie cutter approach. It's individualized, each person comes through. We're asking for twenty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars for the next two years of your open payment funds. It's fifteen percent, and in two years, we'd like the opportunity to review it and see where we're at.
How did your program differ from what the Hope Center does?
So the Hope Center's a residential facility for one year, okay? And I'm a big fan of Hope Centers, all right? And when it comes to, to faith-based options, I believe they're one of the better ones. I've, I've worked clinical environments for eight years, and not in a faith-based environment, a clinical environment. Hope Center's been one of the better ones I've ever dealt with. That's a residential program. They live there, they do, but once they get out, there's not, this is a treatment center problem across the board. There's not a lot of continuity once they leave those facilities. They don't know where they're going. They don't know what kind of employment they're going to encounter. They don't have family resources or that kind of support, then the odds of them thriving in the community is, is very low. What our goal is with this program is not to be a residential program. We're not going to be a residential program. We're going to be an accountability program along with probation. They will be supervised on probation. They will meet with us two to three times a week. There'll be two to three drug screens a week, a lot of accountability. We're not going to tell people how to live differently. Our goal is to show them how to live differently, and that comes with stable housing, that comes with deployment opportunities, that comes with the barriers when they leave treatment centers. I left the treatment center back in two thousand and fourteen, all right? I was there for six months, four months of residential, two months of outpatient. You know what they said after me afterwards? They gave me a list of AA and NA meetings in the area. All right, they didn't know what I was going to leave. Luckily, I, I come from a good family that was able to provide those resources that I needed, so I can get on my feet and, and get things going. But a lot of people that we'll be dealing with, and a lot of people in this disease, don't have those kind of options.
So the return rate from individuals that hit their community and go back to treatment is high because there's not a bin but? We are for bin buts. What's next?
If I might say, have you spoken to Mayor Ward about this?
I know that Judge Bradbury has spoken with, uh, I know they've been in contact since the beginning.
Kind of feel like since he's, you know, out of this meeting, that, uh, you know, it kind of, it's just enough.
I understand.
I'm not saying that, that your program, that it's not a, maybe a good option, but, um, it's something that, that we would have to, we would have to definitely do, and see if that's where he wants.
Would you repeat the amount that you're asking for?
Twenty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars. That is fifteen percent of y'all's opioid payment money in one year. We're asking for that for two years, twenty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars for both years. And with the option to review in two years and see where we're at, it could be funded by the state. We couldn't eat less. We could, we've had a lot of counties who, who put in a little bit more than what we requested. This is what we're requesting here.
Sheriff, is there, do you have any advice for us?
I would like to say this on this program, because I was right in with what I've brought up several times, this work release program. What they're talking about, when you get out, where do you go? And what do you do? Where's your support? These guys are offering that. The work release program should work hand in hand with this, not directly, but, uh, if you're an employer and you employ these people that are incarcerated, when they get out, the place they work is still guaranteeing them a job the next day. When you're done with your time in jail, you would just report to that job from home. And while you're in there, you build up the money. I know some of them got out. Henry County's over twenty thousand dollars. Dyer County's the same way. All their fines and costs have been paid back to the county, restitution, back child support, anything that they vote to the courts in any way. All that's paid off, they've got it behind their foot, get this fresh start you're talking about, and they've got a job that's supporting. And these gentlemen here with their program, to tie right in with that is moral support, availability to talk with people that's been there, keep, keep their project going. It's definitely a good project. I've spoken very shortly with Judge Bradbury, and it is a good program. They would tie it directly in if we could ever put our work release program in here. And I've got a grant that's laying on my desk that I haven't had time to work on. It's four million dollars. And, uh, to put in a work release program here in Benton County, and it will more than pay for itself back. The land and stuff is available. I bought it up several times. You never act on it. Now the grant's available, so this program here is a good program. I do support this program. Anything Judge Bradbury wants to write before the court, I highly support it. He's a very good judge. He's been very good for that county.
I want to say this to the Commissioners. I think we need to send a signal to the community that we care and do something. That's how I feel, man. Somebody can say something and change my mind, please. If we just left you yesterday on some assessments.
On people incarcerated in Benton County?
Uh, yeah, we've already, we haven't initiated it here, uh, yet, but there's been several attorneys email me with applications, uh, for those individuals already. Also, I will say this, we have ninety-five counties in the state, and our district was, and every county in our district were the only counties that did not have some form of recovery court.
I, I can say that, that the money that is collected from the courts, the drug court money, it does go to the state. Now, with that going to the state, will you receive any of that money back?
Well, what they've done in the other counties, Harden County just did it, was they did not cut that check to the state. They did a resolution and cut it to the recovery court for the twenty-fourth district.
Okay.
That's, that's what, and that's what, uh, Carol and Henry, I believe, or all in DeCader Counties, I'm picking theirs up tomorrow. Because I've, I gotta be in court tomorrow with Judge Bradbury. And another thing, too, this is for high-risk, high-needs individuals. This isn't for, this is not for people who've got resources. This is not for people who've got the avenues. We'll help anybody. I've sent a lot of people to treatment that had nothing to do with the recovery court, just because I'm part of the recovery community.
We have a lady in the audience, Angela Jones. She's with the Camden Chronicle. She'd like to ask you a question.
Angela Jones, uh, I'm wondering, what experience does recovery court have collaboratively with compatible resources in the community? Which Robert mentioned, the Hope Center, uh, but each community, of course, has its own AA and NA, you know, standard recovery companies, so to speak. And for individuals living in those communities being aware of and invested in those ongoing recovery communities that exist can be really helpful and get benefits for their long-term recovery. So if you guys do that, we, you are part of the.
Yeah, partner, partnerships are huge. I've got partnerships with, with the Jack Jean Shelter, Man, with Ascent Recovery Center, uh, Teen Challenge, and a couple other places in Harden and DeCader County. I've also got a lot of, with the Life Trade Medical in Harden County. They've offered any resident, anybody who's a good district recovery court, we give them the highest seed medicine for free, thirty-six dollars for blood work, and that's eighty to ninety thousand hard to match there, you know, for you.
So it's not an either-or proposition?
No, no, no.
Say an inmate or a parolee or whatever, who has a need, they did work at their in Hope Center, then they still work you down.
Yeah, so when they go, they go to Hope Center, what we do is we put them out of program until they get back, and then we need to decide what things they're at based on of progress they made at the Hope Center. Uh, so I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of areas where we can do a lot of extra things. It's not just eighteen months in that city. We can do six months, pause it. You didn't even know the residential treatment. Send somebody to residential treatment for six months, and then when they come back, the rest of their, uh, twelve months, Casey.
Real quick, so before I took this job, I worked with Tennessee Department of Health and Substance Services, and what I did, I oversee ten counties. And I was a peer project coordinator. And what I did, I went into those counties to uncover resources that could be streamlined for individuals that were turned back into their community. And so if they weren't there, then we had community forms, uh, to address the needs and levels of community as a resource to help those individuals meet their, meet that need when they return back into the community. And so, yes, we have tons of relationships, tons of different resources that each individual, based on that specific need, we can help to navigate and streamline, uh, that, that resource to them, so they don't have to look around and say, what's next? What do I do? We closed that window. We closed that window, and which I'm grateful to be able to take that experience and bring it into this particular setting.
A lot of them have fines and court costs. I'm just asking, you know, so you help them with that, help them work through instead of plan?
So what we do, and part of our policies and procedures, uh, is that fines and fees and child support, any debt that has to be taken from a complete recovery court. Now, this is alternative sentencing. This is, this is a post-plea, uh, program. So a lot of times, judges have the ability to say, hey, you do well, we'll reduce this portion to make.
So you will help them?
That we help with that. I've got a program right now where if they come out, they don't have driver's license or IDs. I've got a program that'll pay for free driver's license, IDs, birth certificates. And the funding also that, that you would be contributing to for the northern part has specific assistance to individuals. And that's for those things like that, not so much, but if they don't, if they're in treatment, they don't have the money to get medications they need. This will pay for the medications on slide skill fees and things like that. There's a lot of resources available in this program. Uh, because his, his program has been mirrored like the one that we started down in Harden, DeCader County. The budget and everything is mirrored.
You mentioned that it's primarily for lower income. Do you not fill the upper income?
So, so if I said high-risk, high-needs, that has nothing to do with associated economic factors. That has to do with, with their stages of addiction, stages of life. Uh, you've got somebody who, who is a, is a, is a, is a forty-four-year-old, uh, rich meth and heroin user versus a poor twenty-two-year-old who smokes marijuana. That person's more high-risk, high-needs. So it has nothing to do with economic resources in that aspect. But I'm, what I was getting at earlier was that, if I hadn't had those resources when I had the person in recovery, I don't know where I would be today. Uh, because I say a lot of people struggle on that avenue. And we've got the opportunity, people in the north, they may need guidance. People on the south, people in the south, if you get out of that area, they're probably. So, because there are people who do need guidance, community, to, to, to build a foundation to, to continue this, and there are people who can stay. The goal would be to stay in the community, grow it, but that, that's not always optimal for each individual.
Back to the money.
Yes, ma'am.
You said you, that you were asking for twenty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars.
Make sure I got the right carry. Hang on. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, if the Commission should later vote to turn the drug money court over to you, will you receive the twenty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars from the county plus the drug court money on top of that?
Yes, ma'am, which I estimate y'all's to be, what, roughly three to five thousand a year?
I don't know the amount. We'll have to look.
If I remember, I looked over all the numbers, and I believe that, that Benton was somewhere in there. I know Harden Counties was a little over seven thousand. But yeah, so that would all go into, into the, there's gonna be a general fund set aside with it that both of us have access to. In case, truthfully, I mean, because we're dealing with seed money. That's why we'd like to come back in two years, and just give, and we'll come up here and give updates anytime you'd like.
Well, we thank you for coming up and showing your interest in helping our community. This is not anything that we can vote on tonight.
Yes, ma'am, I understand.
And there's a possibility that we might meet with you again, and then it would go before the budget.
Hopefully Judge Bradbury can be there for that. This is my guess.
Yeah. Thank, thank you very much for coming.
Thank y'all for y'all's time. Thank y'all.
Our next guest is Ed Wallace, and he's with Johnson Controls.
Good evening, folks. First off, I'm Ed Wallace of Johnson Controls, and this is John Conson. He's one of our service technicians. Uh, currently, we have a, a control system over at the jail, the sheriff's office, that controls our heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, the HVAC system. And the system that they have over there is why we call version nine, which means nothing to any of y'all, but it's, it's an older version. And if you look in the, the paperwork I gave you, you'll see on page three or page two, there's a little bit of gray box. That's, that's the engine controller that's over there right now that's controlling about fifteen different, fifteen or eighteen?
Fifteen.
Fifteen different controllers, uh, throughout the HVAC system in that building. That gray box you see is about two steps above the old flip phones. And I don't think anybody in here's got a flip phone, do they? Technology has advanced so much that if you'll turn one more page, you'll see a black box. That's today's technology. The old system is gonna be unsupported beginning, beginning January of twenty twenty-four. So we're, we're working with our clients now that had these older systems, because we're afraid it's gonna happen, and we've seen this before. Come January, when some of these systems start breaking down, and we don't have any mechanisms to fix them, to update them, or anything like that, everybody's gonna start, will start buying these newer engines and the newer software. And we're gonna have a run on them where things aren't gonna be able, because of supply chain, we're not gonna be able to get them in place in time. That's why we're talking to our clients now, because we know what's coming. This new system is gonna allow better control of the HVAC system. It's gonna allow even some reduction in your energy costs. But most importantly, it's gonna allow Sheriff Christopher and his staff to do what y'all paid him to do, and that's to maintain the population over there and to protect the citizens of Benton County. It's gonna take him away from having to worry about is somebody getting enough air quality, uh, the fresh air quality in the jail to keep people from getting sick. Because these new controllers and these new systems, that's what they're designed to do. So I don't want to bore you with all the technical aspects. Uh, y'all, you've got my business card in here. It's got my phone number and my email address. Sheriff Christopher knows how to get ahold of both of us if anything comes up. We'll be happy to answer questions. Um, if I don't answer my phone, don't think I'm ignoring you, but if y'all notice, I don't have my phone with me. When I'm with clients, I leave my phone in the car, so it, it don't disturb us, doesn't get in the way. Um, but if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. Uh, again, Sheriff Christopher knows how to get in touch with us. There's some prices in this page as well. Uh, the, the, the prices are basically to install the new equipment, the new machine, to get the new software updated. I understand Chris, Sheriff Christopher's looking at getting another computer back there. The one you got back there is actually just hanging on by a thread, believe it or not. I think it's been rebuilt twice that we know of, or it's had some, a lot of work done to it. The system's no longer gonna be supported in January, and that's the main thing that we need to keep in mind. It's gonna need to be upgraded. It'll still work, but when it quits working, it's dead quits working, and then we won't work again. Which, yeah, we, we were out here last.
Last week.
We, we were out here for, or John was, for a full day trying to get things operating again. But we can piecemeal it, but it's time for this system to get updated. And again, if y'all have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Um, if not, thank you for your time. Appreciate you coming out, appreciate you letting us come out.
If you have a question.
Sure.
How long do you expect the new unit to last?
Well, this unit that's out there now.
It's seven years old.
It, that, that one's been.
It's seven years old, but it's actually a lot older, just because you got it seven years ago.
Right. The technol.
And how long do you expect it to last?
I don't, I don't, I haven't seen anything on, 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 on longevity or, or age. These things usually last a good ten, twelve, fifteen years. This, this engine that he's had, that he's had since two thousand and sixteen, it's actually been out since two thousand and nine. So that can tell you, two thousand and ten, I'm sorry, two thousand and ten. So that tells you about how long, about ten, twelve, thirteen, fifteen years. And we've already got version thirteen. We're gonna install, if it's agreed upon, we're gonna install version twelve over at the jail. Version thirteen will be out sometime later in the fall. If you go with the package that we're recommending, it won't cost you anything extra to get thirteen. It's gonna come in automatically. And it will for the next, any, any service patches or any kind of security upgrades or any kind of, any kind of updates, they come in automatically with the subscription. So you're paying for a one-time deal, and you're not having to pay for each new version that comes out.
So approximately ten years, lifespan, ten, twelve years, baby on the honey?
Well, I, well, yeah, well, we would, I think we would expect that. Now, again, that, that's assuming technology advances at the same rate. Again, you know, five years ago, you had flip phones that, you know, were all the rave, and now we're, we're at i12, iPhones, I think. Does it? I still got a flip phone, by the way. It still works, but I don't use it. I kept it, just kept some pictures on it. I haven't been able to transfer, but different story altogether.
Oh, that might just have description.
They, the, there's two parts of the, of the pricing. That eleven thousand dollars, that's for the new engine, the new, the, the black box, the new upgraded software, and for John's time to get all the controllers updated and get everything running.
There's fifteen controllers that have to be updated.
They have to be updated, each individual one.
This and eleven thousand.
That's the eleven thousand. The, the bottom numbers, you see, the nine thousand, the six thousand, and the six thousand. That's to maintain the system and also to put you on a three-year subscription, which gives you all the free updates. That, the nine thousand includes the subscription, and for John to come out and check all the controllers once we get everything up to speed. We'll come out twice a year, and that's what the, and, and what John does when he comes out twice a year is he goes through, does a performance test on the entire system. He checks the individual controllers to make sure that everything's still responding and operating the way it's supposed to do. And because there's so many controllers on one engine, it takes them a couple days to get all that done. It's really difficult to get that many done in one day.
So in essence, we're paying more for three years of maintenance than the actual cost of the engine.
The way you're, the way you're putting it, yes, sir, that is correct.
We'd be money dead, wait three years, put in the engine.
If that, his engine will last that long. If it dies after January, it's not comparable. Sorry.
I'm talking about after we put in the new.
Yes, sir.
Rather than paying maintenance fees, you could just wait three years and put in a new system, it'd be cheap.
You could, or you'll be calling us out every couple months to deal with issues, because there's multiple people that get on this system. And every time I come out, it's fixing a bunch of stuff. So, you know, this stuff, our stuff controls e- everything that has to do with climate inside the sheriff's office and the jail.
This takes place of thermostat neighbors, yeah.
Yes, in fact, there are no thermostats because it's a jail. So all the, all the equipment is actually controlled by, it's your turn there. So all that, all the fifteen different controllers are controlling, you know, probably thirty different pieces of equipment, because there's a bunch of exhaust fans on one of them. So.
And if you go with what we call a planned service agreement, that's the nine thousand, six thousand, six thousand. The internal labor rates of a planned service agreement are generally eighteen percent cheaper than they would be. If you didn't have one, and Sheriff Christopher called us up and said, hey, something broke the matter. So then John goes out there and whatever, however much time he spends, you're paying a higher labor rate for that than you would be if you do a planned service agree.
So you're controlling this with a laptop, right?
Actually, it's on a.
It's, it's on a PC.
It's on a workstation.
Can they control, or you have to come do it each time?
No.
So they
So it's it's at, it's at their site, we don't have remote access to it, right? Security reasons.
Not yet.
Not yet.
That 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 term, that technology is coming. We're just not sure when.
What kind of warranty is that you have on that?
That's a good question. You might know? No, just kidding, just kidding. Typically, they come with a twelve-month warranty. And like I said, you know, these things, they're they're pretty robust, they're going to last ten, twelve, fifteen years. The old one that you have now, you had since two thousand and nine, I believe, two thousand and nine, is that what we found out? No, two thousand and sixteen. You've had it since twenty sixteen, but these machines have been out since two thousand and nine. And they lasted, in some places, I'm going to be honest with you, some places have said they're not changing, they're keeping the old ones. And that's fine, that's that, you know, that's that's the fault.
Their progress, but.
But when it breaks down after twenty twenty-four, they're 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 done, they they're, they can't do anything. And if their situation is like you have in the jail where there's no thermostats, it's going to get really hot really quick because those controllers won't kick in.
Is your engine exclusive with this, the only thing that works those controls or?
It's proprietary software, yes, sir. Yes, sir, if you called, you know, Mom and Pop's AC company down the street, they wouldn't know what to do with this. I mean, they might know, they might have experience with controllers, but they wouldn't be able to touch ours. Got that right credentials and we're a little stingy with our proprietary software, like most companies are. Any other questions? Thank you for letting us come out. If you have any questions, you got my business card, give us a holler, Sheriff Chris, appreciate your time today. So have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair. I'd just like to say that this is the primary system for this, we're the only ones who are calling for it. Like, what's got us in the situation that we're in over there now is not following through with our maintenance. We'd have to get them to come in here, they're so awesome, of course, older, yes, more, hadn't come in and worked on it. And we got a lot of stuff that, I mean, I just feel like if we hadn't done the maintenance, I don't care what you do either way, if we had done the maintenance, I don't think, I think this system might have lasted a little longer. But we just have to call them if something comes down, otherwise, we just come in once a year. And I believe they said they'd come in twice or three times a year, but they told me, anytime we call them with any problems, it's already been covered due to any charges that have happened. And we got into the same thing, I'll bring that a little bit later, with standing, uh, a system we put in over there, we didn't take the maintenance, we're having all kinds of trouble. And it's a new system and what it's doing is just locking all of our doors, nobody can go in or out, sales or anything else, so. We have a fire, we got, oh, what's causing it, so we're trying to get them down here. But we've had a lot of trouble with their system. We did not choose to do the, commission did not choose to take the maintenance, we know it's going to cost us. But it's, uh, if you've got a correction officer in the cell with inmates, it decides to lock down, it locks down, fire, you gotta go around manually with the key, you gotta get the cell door open, it just locks everything down. You can't go from one part of the building to corrections officer, can't go from one part of the building to the other one. Uh, to get, get where they need to be, it's a dangerous situation we've got. I was going to bring that up, but that's, we didn't take the maintenance, we were standing. I I don't know anything about this company here, the other day's the first time I've been, but they've been very good about coming whenever we would call them, we're having more and more trouble with this system. So that's when they called me the other day, pretty much stopped late, we didn't get it fixed by January, but when it does go down, we're going to be waiting to put a system in. So they control soft rock, soft sand, and everything there. I just wanted to hear what you guys.
Okay, we're going to move on, on the agenda. We are at number five, which is the approval of the minutes. Um, it's a voice vote, all in favor approving the minutes, say aye. Anyone oppose? Yes, I do, I'm sorry. I need a motion in a second. We did have one by Commissioner Hicks and Commissioner Keniston. And next is the report of the public utilities, I need a motion in a second for that one. Motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Stokes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Okay, we're down to resolution number one, which is, um, a resolution by Mayor Ward to amend resolution twenty twenty-three oh six twenty-sixteen regarding the transfer of funds in the amount of twenty-seven, twenty-three thousand dollars within the sheriff's payroll budget. This is to correct an error on the original resolution that was submitted by the sheriff's office and passed in on June twenty, twenty twenty-three. We have a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Price. Any questions? It's just correcting an error. Okay, if there are none, everyone please vote.
Jeff Murphy?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries.
Resolution number two is by Mayor Mark Ward to appropriate funds in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars to the liability insurance line item to cover payments for the county's liability insurance coverage. We have a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions? I see none, so please vote.
Jeff Murphy?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Fifteen yes, motion carries.
Resolution number three is by the Director of Schools, Mark Florence, to budget funds in the amount of one hundred and seven thousand dollars, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Let me repeat that, one hundred and seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars received from the Innovative Schools grant. I have a motion by Commissioner Stokes and a second by Commissioner Hicks. Any questions? Okay, there are none, so please vote.
Jeff Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Stokes? Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries.
Resolution four is by the Director of Schools, Mark Florence, to appropriate funds from the unassigned fund balance in the amount of four hundred and seventeen thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars to the school's budget to cover a miscalculation in expenditures. We have a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Bane. Any questions? Okay, there are none, so please vote.
Jeff Murphy?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Fifteen yes, motion carries.
Resolution five is by the Director of Schools, Mark Florence, to move funds in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars within the school's budget to cover a miscalculation in expenditures. We have a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions about this one? I see there are none, so please vote.
Jeff Murphy?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, fifteen yes.
Resolution six is by the Director of Schools, Mark Florence, to move funds in the amount of eighty-three thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars within the school's budget to cover a miscalculation in expenditures. I have a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions? There are none, so please vote.
Jeff Murphy?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, fifteen yes. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
You, no change, no change in you on yet?
Yes.
Motion passes. Resolution seven is by Mayor Mark Ward to reappoint James One Melton to the Benton County Electric System Board for a four-year term. Any questions or comments? Since there are none, please vote.
Jeff Murphy?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, fifteen yes.
Number fourteen on the agenda is the appointing of notaries. We have two. First one is Marilyn Cuff Fowler and number two is Rhonda Jeanette Wagner. All in favor of appointing these notaries, please vote. Okay, we'll take a voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay. Number fifteen is any other business, do we have any other business, anybody wants to bring?
Uh, I moved it, we need to suspend the rules for consideration of the eight resolutions made.
Okay, that's your motion, do we have a second? We have a second by Commissioner Melton. Okay, what this is, I'll try to explain it a little bit, is its formality, um, we do this all the time. We have to send this letter into the comptroller's office by July thirty-first and it's so that we can remain in the three-star program. Oh, okay, so now that you know what we're going to be voting on, let's vote if we want to suspend the rules. All in favor of suspending the rules?
Jeff Murphy?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Fifteen yes.
Okay, now, did everyone get the letter, a copy of this letter? From, that is what we are approving to, for the mayor to send to the comptroller's office. Does anyone have any questions about it? It it is very important that we stay in the three-star program because, you know, it helps us with our grants and if we borrow money, we can get lower interest rates. There's a lot of good things about it and we have a committee also that sets, um, that is the three-star committee. I think there are eleven members of that committee. Do we have any questions? Okay, if there are none, please vote.
Jeff Murphy?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, fifteen yes.
Okay, um, if you have any business, I saw a couple of people raise their hands, another sheriff did, is there somebody else that has any other business tonight? Okay, Sheriff, you're recognized.
Madam Chairman, I've got two or three things I need to bring up. One is we're on, right now, we're operating on this one twelfth, so that's kind of running short every month or everything, we've got cars and stuff that sit in the shop, you know, we can't pay the bills to get them out, things like that, because we're on this one twelfth. So with that being said, I've got this two or three receipts here where I've paid some stuff out of pocket that we had to have, some stuff for some inmates that we didn't have money to cover, uh, some weed eater stuff that we had to have and, uh, items for the kitchen and stuff, it doesn't amount to a whole lot of money, like one of them's twenty-nine dollars, one of them's seventeen. Uh, I think the other one, maybe twenty-nine dollars. The things that I'd like to get reimbursed for. Second thing that I've got, uh, I was asked to get the price for, uh, what it would take to equip the one patrol car that we had that's all equipped on, uh, from Trucker's Lifehouse, where we've had all of them done the pass and they do now have a state contract on all this, so that is our best price is, is fourteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars and eighteen cents is what it would take to put the equipment on that patrol car, so I want to pass that on to them. And the third thing I've got is, I think I mentioned to some of commissioners a while back that this would probably be a problem this year, I can see it coming, so I'll ask for your assistance on it. Next week, I have to go to mandatory training, uh, it's a week-long training we have to go to, we go to it every year and it's never been a problem. The state rate at the hotels that we stay at is, uh, at the wilderness, it's a hundred and seventy-nine dollars per night, the state rate is, it's a little over two hundred dollars, I think, uh, if we don't have a room there. Uh, this time, I always stay at a different place and the county pays the, whatever the state rate is, and I pick up the difference and stay somewhere else, as many of the other sheriffs would. Uh, that's never been a problem, and this time, I'm being told that we're only going to pay a hundred dollars a night, uh, for this instead of a one seventy-nine because I'm not choosing to stay at the wilderness. Or, actually said wilderness and, uh, the county commission will pay the full rate, whatever it might be, two hundred, about a dollar for the room, as long as I stay at the wilderness since there's not even rooms blocked off by the Sheriff's Association, they only blocked off so many, most of them, I stay there, at least half of them. What I've always done in the past is just took the state rate money and I paid the difference and stayed five miles down the road where I wanted to stay, I put in a lot of hours every day and, uh, kind of used this as a vacation, even though it's a work-in vacation, I felt quite certain of that. So what I'm asking y'all to do is can, apparently, there is some kind of rule in there about this and I want to know if we can fix that tonight. Uh, it's going to cost me an extra three hundred and twenty dollars, uh, to stay if we only pay a hundred dollars a night to go to mandatory training. It's never been a problem, uh, I was told it was a fine the other year when I asked the, uh, auditor to look at it, and they sent me a printout and they just shown it by me. If it was a fine, I think that wasn't corrected or whatever, I think that would show up before the man. So I'm just asking y'all if we can pay the state rate for the nights that I'm required to stay, all of that, even though I'm going to stay an extra night, I'm going to pay that almost there, so just pay the difference in that and where I want to stay at. Same company every year, it's about five miles down the road and it's a whole lot quieter than staying there at that water park and everything, I don't have any kids going with me or nothing, so. I just like to know if we can do what we've been doing the last nine years. Chairman, would it be in order for me to make a motion for, uh, the county to pay the state rate regardless of where the sheriff stays?
I actually was under the impression that that's what the mayor's office did, I could be wrong.
That's what we've always done, but.
The way it reads, it doesn't read that way, it reads that you find a convention rate if you stay at the downtown board convention. Otherwise, it comes out, there was a policy that, I believe, you have a personal code for, about here, it was a whole, it was a class here.
And Chair, I'm like a sick and rocky motion, I ain't no use, I'm paying for the hotel as soon.
When is your convention?
It'll start, I was supposed to be there Sunday afternoon, Monday morning, it was party class. What, we've always done this and it hasn't been a problem, what, we both in the same policy that Phil Melton's talking about, it also says that we're only going to, it was adopted, we're only paying like forty-something cents a mile if you use your own vehicle, but that part changed automatically, the state rate coming up, and it went to fifty-something cents and now it's like it's sixty-something cents. We're already doing that part.
And in old four, I mean, your hotel was probably forty, fifty dollars a night.
Yeah.
It's an old, it's an old policy.
I just, I just like to know if we can fix it and if we can, I would appreciate it, but I mean, never been a problem, it doesn't cost the county any money.
I think since we don't have time, and since his convention is like next week, I think we should go ahead and vote on it tonight. So we have a motion by Commissioner Preston and a second by Commissioner Hicks. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And there are none? Okay, is that the county will remember for the other crucial.
Chairman?
They did, um, that they will pay the convention rate even if they stay at another hotel. Okay. Yeah.
Chairman, are you sure this is not the
We can roll call that. Let me ask, would, would the commission, um, yeah, that's why I was thinking we're not spending the money tonight. Something else I might bring up to you, do you, as a commission, want this to be the same for all elected officials?
I think it should be updated. That's nineteen years. I think it should be moved out by the legislature.
Okay, so, so your motion was for the sheriff. Okay. Do you, do you wanna vote tonight and make that official and let it be for all elected officials? The same policy for them? Hundred and two, okay, then we need a motion and a second, if that's what you would like to do. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Bane and a second by Commissioner Miller. This is to allow the same policy for all elected officials.
For all?
Yes.
All elected, right, especially.
Well, we don't have a. Are you ready? Okay, well, yes. Okay, now we're going to take the voice vote on the second motion to make this the same policy for all elected officials. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
Maybe we say everybody except one?
Yeah, I think so, except the county clerk. Debbie Bane.
It's kinda like how we want our building up.
Yeah, Bane and Miller. Do we have any other business?
I say we vote herself in one of these, too.
Well, we are elected. It, it does, it would apply because we are considered elected.
But we stay elected, don't we?
Pardon? No, you're just paying what the convention rate is going to be.
Yeah.
Because all of the conferences, they have a convention rate at a certain hotel, and that's all that the county will reimburse for.
That's true.
If you wanna stay somewhere else, you have to pay the difference. Yeah, yeah, it's called. Any other business? If none, they will have a motion by Commissioner Hicks to adjourn, and a second by Commissioner Miller. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Miller.